Enter your participant ID followed by pound, otherwise just press pound to continue. You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak.
Thank you.
Hello.
I haven't yet.
I know I saw some when I was leaving.
Thanks for the hat.
And I got a chance to talk to Justin a little bit about the.
The six o'clock city council meeting of March 18th, 2025, please note all the council members are present. With that, we are going to turn the time over to Vice Chair Hyer to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise if you're able and recite the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take a moment of silence with me. Thank you. We have a couple of, or we have an acknowledgement, excuse me, tonight. The first one is Women's History Month.
Well, thank you. I am so privileged and honored that I am able to recognize the League of Women Voters of Weber County, which I see many here in the audience, especially their president, Terry McCullough, for her service of 24 years as the president of that organization. I just want to tell you a little bit about League of Women Voters very quickly before she comes up to say something. So the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure everyone is represented in our democracy. They empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation at the local, state, and national levels. I just wanted to really quickly give you a little history of the League. It was founded as a successor organization to the National American Women Suffrage Association by Carrie Chapman Cat in 1920, just six months before the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution was ratified, giving all American women the right to vote after a 72-year fight for women's suffrage. So the League has been involved in this fight for a long time, and we just appreciate how much work you do. I do want to give a caveat that I am a member of the League of Women Voters. So I, you know, I definitely am a little bit biased, but I appreciate all the work you do in the community to help register voters, host debates and discussions when people are up for election, and then also everything else you do. So thank you so much, Terry and the League. Terry, would you like to say something and then we can do a picture up here with everybody? Yes. Oh, just there at the mic. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's kind of a weird. Yeah, it's a weird situation where you have to look at us. Yeah.
You guys have a good look at my back. I appreciate this honor. We've worked really hard this year. This has been quite a challenge. And so I appreciate the fact that you would notice that and recognize the work that you do as well. And I want to thank my members that are here. Sierra Green, Leon, I don't know how to say your last name, it's not happening, John Hines, Karen Thurber, Stacy Bernal, Suzanne Dawson, Anne Freymouth, Donna Kimball, Arlene Anderson, Kathy Gambles, C.J. Hernandez. There, without them, I would be nothing. I promise, absolutely.
You all can come up and we'll take a picture, right? Yeah.
But most people don't get that excited.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to, I couldn't see Dave there. Our next item of business, the approval of minutes, the field trip of February 28th, 2025, Councilmember Bridget Burka.
Well, thank you. Those were the easiest minutes I've ever read. They were totally accurate to my recollection, and I motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Is this a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Chair, can I just real quick on the acknowledgements?
Yeah.
I missed the, I missed our meeting last week where Troy from Gold Foundation made his presentation, but I just wanted to acknowledge the excellent race they put on last week. And the weather was, you know, it cooperated for the most part. It kept us cool. But they did a great job. The volunteers that they bring out are just unbelievable. So, yeah.
Thank you. I just zoomed past through there and any other acknowledgements if we want to circle back around?
Yeah, thank you. I had the privilege of going out to Shadow Valley Elementary School last Wednesday night. They were, it was a big STEM program, and the students had worked on a project. And they had a tabling event, and I spent time with the fifth graders. And it all had to do with the science of our winter inversion and in the context of the no idle month of February. And they had the science down. They had solutions proposed. It was really a heartwarming thing to see fifth graders really take this up and be serious about air quality, especially against the backdrop of the survey results that we got around Ogden, where our residents rated our air quality as the number one concern around our environment in the city of Ogden. So I'm really glad that we've got young people involved in science and paying attention to what our air quality is and what it can do to our lives, especially in light of what's going on in Washington, D.C. and the dismantling of our EPA. We've got to have somebody that's tuned into the science of our health and well-being. So it was a privilege to go out there.
Thank you. Any other acknowledgements since I zoomed past them quickly?
It wasn't on the agenda.
It didn't have to be. All right. Well, we've already done the approval of minutes. Let's go on to the next item, number four, recognition. The Ogden-Weber Community Action Partnership.
I know, and I apologize. I've just got the Angela show for a few minutes here, but I'm also very excited this evening to read this recognition. Ogden City Council and Mayor proudly recognize Ogden-Weber Community Action Partnership for providing 60 years of invaluable service to the Ogden community. Since its establishment on March 26, 1965, Ogden-Weber Community Action Partnership, or AOCAP, has been a cornerstone of support and empowerment for individuals and families in Weber County. Over the last six decades, AOCAP has evolved to serve the diverse needs of the entire county, once focusing on specific neighborhoods such as Washington-Jefferson, D. Lewis, Marshall White, and West Ogden, but now reaching communities all across Weber County. Throughout its history, AOCAP has launched and supported transformation program, transformative programs, including Head Start, Early Head Start, and the Roy Communities That Care Coalition. It established Meals on Wheels and played a role in the creation of the Ogden Housing Authority and many other programs. The organization has also addressed pressing challenges through initiatives like Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, or BIDA, Circles, Financial Literacy Programs, and its responsive COVID-19 efforts, which included rental assistance and housing workshops. As AOCAP celebrates its 60th anniversary, we honor its ensuring impact on the Ogden community and look forward to many more years of continued service and success. This is presented this day, 18th day of March, 2025. Thank you. You can take this. Does he want to do a picture first? Yes, of course, of course. Oh, yeah, and then make sure you imagine your open house.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Thanks so much. Come on down. Yeah, tape law, taped ones.
I just want to say thank you to City Council and to Mayor Dodinsky for our recognition. You know, our agency has been here for 60 years, committed to helping people changing lives. That's the tagline of community action. And my team and myself, we are dedicated to another 60 years. By then, you'll have to have somebody else come speak, but hopefully we're retired. Or that poverty is eradicated, right?
Yeah, thank you. Do you want to announce your open house?
Yeah, biggest news ever. We are going to have our community open house on Friday, March 28, from 3:00 to 5:30. We'd love anyone to come, if you want to invite anyone. We are in the Old Jefferson School that was built in 1970. It's changed on the inside. We'd love for you all to come in and see it. And the best part is, is that we will have the old school peanut butter bars there. So we'd love to see you all there. Thanks.
Do you mind if I just say one more thing to Chris and AOCAP Chair?
Please.
Thank you. Sorry, and then I'll stop talking. I just want to say how much I appreciate all you do for the community, and I was honored enough to serve for a little while on the parent advisory group. And that's just such a wonderful group to see all the parents involved in the organization and understanding how it all works. And just really appreciate all of the things you do for the community.
I would agree with that, Councilmember. I think one of the things that we get caught up in is trying to figure out how to do it all. And we recognize that there are so many great partners in our community and that we need you and rely on you to do some great things. And I just, I don't know how our city would be without the great partners like AOCAP. So thank you for all you do.
You're here.
All right. Before I move on, I'm going to go a little slower so that in case there's something else. Well, next on our agenda is a request to be on the agenda, and it is the Utah State University Master Gardener Program. And I think we have Nate Staker here. There's Nate.
So I guess I'll talk about my favorite topic, me. So my name is Nate Staker. I run and take care of the Ogden Botanical Gardens. I've been there for about four years and three months. I grew up here in Ogden, specifically North Ogden, and went to school at Utah State University and got a degree in residential landscape design and construction. And somehow I magically landed this job at the Ogden Botanical Gardens. But I inherited a mess, a bit of a mess, when I first got there. For those that don't know, the botanical gardens were started in 93, and there's about 25 acres to 30 acres roughly in size. And then we have been with, taking care of the contract since 1994, so over 30 years. This is our 31st. Let me go to the next slide.
You probably can do it. There you go.
Okay. Just so you get familiar with who runs and takes care of the botanical gardens, there's me, of course. Helen Muntz, she's over our Master Gardener Program, and we get about 35 master gardeners a year that enroll in the program since 1989 is when that first started here in Utah. She does a terrific job. She's been a professor in teaching for 10 years now. Next, we have Alex Zeziger. She's our outreach manager for both our garden as well as the Caseville Botanical Garden, and she's been there for two years. Thank you. Here's a list of who we've teamed up with. Obviously, the Ogden City Parks and Recreation, Green Waste. With our Master Gardener Program, we bring in $14,000 into the botanical garden annually. We received a rent grant from Weber County for, and we partnered with Foodscaping Utah on that grant, and we were able to replace some beds that were falling apart. It's really important because that produce that we produce at the gardens is also a living museum. And so when we're done with it, we actually take it to Catholic community services, and we donate that over. Last year, we had over 1,000 pounds of produce that was taken over to Catholic community services. We received a pollinator grant that's worth $5,000. And I have highlighted in, in yellow here, High Country Gardens. They're an online retail nursery. They gave us, they've been giving us the last four years donations, and they equal every year between $200,000 to $250,000. When I first got there at the botanical gardens, it was really pitiful of how many spring blooms we actually had at the botanical gardens. And it, this, these donations have just been game changers. I estimate now that we have over a million spring blooms because of those efforts. And we've had to plant in the freezing cold and snow to try to get these bulbs in. Lastly, we have a STEM project. It's called Park in a Pack, and students can check out these backpacks and go out into the garden and explore. It's a great opportunity that they have, and it's great for homeschool groups that come in and utilize it. Next slide, please. Here's just a list of other organizations that we work with on a regular basis. We can go to the next slide. Here's some of the improvements since I've been there. We fixed our Asian garden up. Our cottage garden, we put in a new pergola, and we, we were able to get the ramp grant with the raised veggie beds. And then when I first arrived to the botanical gardens, we were only teaching four classes a year. Now we're teaching up to 40 classes a year. We've teamed up with Weber County Libraries, and we've been teaching there with our master gardeners. In fact, I have two tonight that are over at our main library here in Ogden, teaching raised veggie bed gardening. Two to three big events per year is what we, we've been doing now at the botanical gardens. And we planted 170 new trees at the botanical gardens. And 2023 was our best year with 60 trees planted that year. So we're making big changes. So what is, what does this all look like? Well, over the course of 13 months, it set a record for how many volunteer hours we were able to do at the botanical garden. 5,133 hours. And it's pretty amazing to see, looks like 700 was our best year, our best mark in October. Let me go to the next slide. And here's the list of my top 20 volunteers that put in a lot of hours. My name's up there, and it's only up there because that's how I keep track of groups that come in and volunteer. And so I record it that way as just a one-time single group. So behind me, I have the Women League of Voters. They've come in, and I have recorded some of their hours up there. So thank you. Next slide. So what is, what does that equate to? 5,311 hours? Well, the Good Institute, Do Good Institute, has a list here of what a volunteer hour is. So nationally, we're recognized at $33.49 an hour. If you take that, it equals $177,000 worth of effort going into the botanical garden. Not to mention all the donations and different things that are included outside of that. Next slide, please. Here's just a picture of us planting some of the trees and planting some of the new plants within the past year. So lastly, I passed out this pamphlet here that says turf, turf trial sponsorship. So what we're trying to plan for, for the future with this is have at least 12 varieties of turf grass that's not Kentucky bluegrass that needs an annual precipitation of 24 inches or just a little bit more of water so that we can show the public how to be better stewards and better examples with their home lawns. One thing that we're trying to do is get sponsorship on this. So if you have any ideas of anybody that we could work with, with installing this, it's going to take some, some time and especially some money to put this in, but we have started it. And it did take a while to get rid of that pesky Bermuda grass that was there in its place. So I guess I'll turn it over if there's any questions, but that's my final remarks. I really appreciate taking care of the botanical gardens. It's love and a passion that I have, especially working with those volunteer tiers as well. We, when I first got there, we had 2,300 hours is what we were working on, and we've almost doubled that. Well, no, we have doubled that amount. I looked back in the newsletter from 1990 era, and they were just excited to get 1,000 hours at the botanical gardens. So who knows what the future has to bring, and hopefully we can work with everybody and different partners and making it a better place. So thank you.
Thanks. Any questions?
I'm sorry, I do have one question. I know a couple of people that have gone through the Master Gardener Program. I don't know if you wanted to tell just a brief synopsis of what that is.
The Master Gardener Program is a 15-week-long course. There's professors from Utah State that come down and teach for about three hours once a week with the students, and they get hands-on training at the botanical gardens. And so we've been able to really implement ideas and things that they've been learning in class and put out to practice. So, yes.
Not only is it a beautiful place to come and visit, but you're, you're a great resource for classes, the Master Gardener. But I, I've gone down on Wednesday nights with stuff I've pulled out of my landscaping, and there is a, a table full of excited volunteers to help me figure out what's going on in my yard, and I thank you for that. And they aren't very busy. So for anybody that's listening in tonight, they, they've got answers to your questions, and they're a great resource. So I've appreciated you in that way.
Thank you, Dave. So that's every Wednesday night, May through September, that anybody can come down to the botanical gardens at 1750 Monroe Boulevard and find out what's going on with their grass, what kind of bug is this, what kind of disease, plant, anything like that, we'll, we're able to help them. So, thank you.
When does that start?
May, the first Wednesday in May, and goes to the last Wednesday of September.
Just going to say thank you as well. It is beautiful down there, and probably on behalf of all the high school prom students that go get their pictures there. That, that's the one time it is super busy is when it's a, you know, there's a prom, there's everyone getting their pictures taken down there.
You know, tonight, when you're done with the meeting, go on Facebook and just look through your friends' profile pictures. And it's really interesting to see how many people actually go and get photos and make lasting memories at the botanical gardens. So, thank you.
Nate, I do have a question.
Yes.
I think, I think I've been down there with bugs and weeds too.
I think I've been down there with bugs and weeds, and that's really nice for you to do that. But I wonder, you know, I look at a gardener class, I think, you know, I'm an aspiring vegetable gardener that has never been very successful. I can grow a lot of tomato vine, not many tomatoes.
Plants.
So there's a lot of stuff that I think that you guys could really help people like myself, and that's kind of why I wanted to break it up, not just to prove that I'm, I've got a brown thumb, but but you know, you guys know the answers to those questions, and I think that it's a very underutilized resource.
It is. Hopefully, we're able to get, I'm hoping to send somebody to the farmer's market and advertise this summer on how to come into these diagnostic clinics and utilize that time, because we're pretty slow. Sometimes we're not, but most of the time we're slow, so.
Do you talk any about aquaculture, some of those things that are becoming more popular to the average?
You know, I've experienced it because I did work for Disney for a short time as an intern and did aquaponics, so at least I know people to reference and start digging at to find some answers, so.
Great. Thanks again.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nate. I too have a brown thumb, so.
I thought you were going to ask him to come to your house.
I might. All right, next on our agenda is a consent item, a couple of consent items that take a roll call vote. That doesn't make sense a lot. First is the Audit Committee Appointments. We have, we had two open spots, I think, and we filled two spots, but we need a motion on this one.
Chair, I had a motion that we adopt the consent, the items under consent, the proposed resolution twenty twenty-five dash five.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie and second by Councilmember Myers. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Councilmember Chuburka.
Aye.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye. That passes, and I, we have Jared in, Jared Stevens in the you want to come up real quick, and I just want to acknowledge that you're here, because it's the last time we'll probably go yay. Thank you. Just thank you. And just real quick, why did you want to be part of this Audit Committee?
I've been an accountant for about a decade now, and I enjoy what I do, and I like getting out and helping the community in any way I can, and I thought this would be a good opportunity to get out there more.
Thank you. Thank you for serving on this committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Thanks, Jared.
Thanks, Jared.
Is it appropriate to make any comments from the council at this point?
Of course. I'm just seeing it the other, I don't see.
I don't see Patrick Munson here. Well, I just want to applaud both Jared and Patrick Munson as new members of this Audit Committee. They're highly qualified professional people. Jared particularly has the heart of a servant and wants to give and participate, and it's been my privilege to be associated with him for the past five years with, through the Chamber of Commerce, and I've just seen his willingness to give and represent, and most notably in the chamber as a spiker, which is one of the ambassadors for the spikers. We hope you can do the same for Ogden City now as you join that Audit Committee. So, great choices. Just highly recommend both Jared and also Patrick. So, thanks for all of you for your support of these outstanding candidates.
Thanks. Any other comments? All right, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is a public hearing on the proposed tax agreement for the Forest Service Building. And I think we have we have a presenter first, right?
Yep. Nate Robertson.
Yeah, I'm just oh, he is. Nate, I see you now online. Sorry about that.
Hello, thank you for letting me join virtually.
You're welcome, and I'm glad you can join. How's that?
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great.
Okay. So this is a continuation of the parameters resolution that was adopted last month. As part of this particular bond that is being issued by the city's RDA, it will be a tax increment bond. In an effort to strengthen interest rates, the city also is pledging sales tax revenues and doing that through an interlocal pledge. And that is what requires the public hearing tonight. We are in process moving right along with the bond after having received the formal approval with the adoption of the parameters resolution a few weeks ago. We are now waiting for bids to come back on the bonds. We sent out what we call a term sheet to potential bidders. Those bids are due this coming Friday. We anticipate that we'd then make a selection of a winning bidder early next week, and that would allow for a closing by April fourth. And then, of course, this bond is being used to purchase the Forest Service Building. And that's the status update that we have at the moment.
Any questions for Nate? All right, there may be some others, so just if you could hang on through our public hearing, that would be great.
Okay.
Right, this is a public hearing to talk about this particular item, the tax agreement that we are using for the Forest Service Building. If there's anybody that would like to speak about that, that'd be great. Come up and we'll give you your three minutes. I thought Jared might be the first one up.
Chair, not seeing any hands online or any movement, I'd make a motion we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Vice Chair Hayer to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's that? Okay. Yeah, go ahead. We just need a motion on the resolution itself.
Madam Chair, I'd like
Oh, wait, there's no action.
No action.
This is just the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's what you were trying to stop me from. Thank you. All right, well, the public hearing was set in February eighteenth of twenty twenty-five. No action on this tonight, but we will have action coming up, it sounds like, within a week or so. All right, next on our agenda is the public hearing. This is, I mean, gosh, darn it. I know, thanks. I am really off tonight. This is a public comment. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding any concerns or ideas on any topic. If you have any, please come up, state your name, and three minutes.
Hi, I'm Steve Jones, Ogden resident. And some time ago, I stood up here and said we were going to work on revitalizing the Save Union Station Facebook group and restart the in-person public meetings that we were having some time ago. That activity has restarted. The Two Bit Bistro has opened and given us a place to meet. So every Friday night at five thirty, this group is meeting. The focus is anything and everything having to do with Union Station and how it impacts Twenty-Fifth Street and Ogden as a whole, and vice versa. And we just want to make sure you are all invited, and the administration is invited to join us anytime at all. Because there's, you know, it's an open discussion. The goal is, we want to see the right things done at Union Station to make it a stronger part of Ogden, and also to make sure that, you know, the things that we love dearly there are still there for our future generations. And, you know, we've seen some concepts. In those concepts, there are some very innovative ideas and things that will really, I think, play well. We've seen some things that we believe more homework needs to be done before the city locks into some of the concepts. For instance, how much space is really needed for the railroad display building? I don't think anyone has gone out and actually measured what's there, counted the number of railcars and engines and so forth. How much space are they really going to need? We need to be working with facts instead of guesses, because when we guess, we probably will miss it, and once we cast the thing in stone, it's not going to, not going to happen again. So and there are a couple of things that might be considered red flags, but I'm not going to get into that now. I want to make sure that we're having open discussions, that the city is being as transparent with this group as we are being, you know, with the city, and we want positive outcomes. So I dropped off some business cards for the Save Union Station Facebook group. Please, you know, feel free to chime in anytime at all, and you're always welcome to join us on Friday nights at Two Bit Bistro. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Is there a time or just?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Thank you.
Friday nights.
Thanks.
Okay.
Laura Lewis, Ogden City resident.
I'll pick up for a liftoff with the water. I just wanted to say last week, my water is much better this week, by the way. It's actually almost clear, so I'm very happy. But I did want to compliment your staff. It was an ugly situation, but they handled it very well. Every contact I had, whether it was someone answering the phone, transferring me to the next person, everyone was very helpful, and that was, I felt very impressive, because I'm sure they must have been getting boatloads of calls from people like me wanting to know why their water was dirty. Okay, secondly, I thought that survey was very, very helpful. It made me feel like my opinions are not way out there. I'm kind of pretty much in line with everybody else, what they want from the city. And one of the things everyone keeps bringing up is the loss of green space. And I know, Councilman Graff, you mentioned that we weren't losing space. It was just infill, and I do think that's a lot of the problem, but I also think a lot of, some of this is the height of the buildings we're allowing now, because that is a visual obstruction, I think, and is not real pleasant. But I also want to go back in time a little bit, back to when that was originally the property along the river, originally back in the seventies, and maybe some of you can remember and help me work through this. But that was called the Green Belt Project, and it was supposed to be an agricultural area with actually being parks and recreation all along that river, was my impression at the time, because I was kind of involved in that. And suddenly, I think it was back in somewhere around the two thousands, that shifted, and we started getting commercial development along the river. And right now, we've lost some of that. What I thought was property that belonged to Ogden City is now where we have all those high-rise apartments right along the river that go clear out to Twenty-first Street. And to me, that was really quite a waste of recreational property. It was a nice area to walk along that parkway, but now it's like going down a tunnel between all those apartment buildings. You can't see the views anymore. The whole area's changed. And I think like that, things like that need to be thought out very carefully, where you put those kind of developments, because they have a huge impact on the whole area around the river and people who use it. It changes the way, you know, like I say, it was kind of an open environment along there, and now it's full of apartments and restaurants. And there's garbage blowing around there from the restaurants all the time that wasn't there before. So I think if you guys could kind of keep those kind of things in mind for those of us who want to keep as much green space and views open, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Oh, I went overtime. Thanks, Laura. Any others? Jeez, no one online either, I don't think, right? Yeah, Tracy, you just keep coming in and out, so I'm just going to say we're going to allow you to talk.
There you go. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Sorry, I've had a lot of technical difficulties with being able to reach you online. This is Teresa Brownwell, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak today. I intended on being in the meeting, but I have some issues with my building in Ogden that I have my handyman out here trying to get some things fixed, so I couldn't be there. But I wanted to bring up some issues that I feel are important in the city of Ogden, especially with what's going on with our federal government right now and the amount of jobs that have been lost with the IRS and the federal building. And I have seen some bruhaha online about the federal building being sold by the federal government and also the IRS building in Ogden being sold by the federal government. And I think Ogden, at least for my lifetime, has been very much focused on federal money, federal jobs, and federal, it's kind of a one-trick pony with the federal government funding everything, and I have watched Ogden in my lifetime kind of get worse and worse and worse, and more crime and more destitution and less businesses and less prosperity and less people that are contributing to taxes and, you know, keeping society functioning, especially in the neighborhood that I own. And so what I would love to see in Ogden City is, I would love to see Ogden start to focus more on small businesses, on just individuals, people that live in the city, starting their own businesses, restaurants, beauty salons, small retail, just anything that can, that is not being funded by the federal government, because the federal government is going to be, you know, either swinging pendulumming wildly to the left or wildly to the right. And if we can focus on our own people, I feel like we can have a better city and a more prosperous city. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Looks like there's no one else.
It's not there.
All right. All right, comments from the mayor.
Thank you. First want to say thanks for the invitation from Steve, and I want to give it to you all. I got to come back. It's been a while. And I just want to tell the council members, for anybody that's thinking of going, they're very warm and very welcoming. Just really kind environment. It's, sometimes this atmosphere makes us feel like we're pitted against each other, and we're just not. And I was just reflecting when Steve was talking about times that I would go. It is turned on. It doesn't feel like it is. That's okay. Hopefully you guys can hear me. Anyway, thanks for the genuine offer. Is that better?
No, same.
How about both?
Get three of them.
I want to thank you, Laura, for recognizing our staff. They were fielding quite a few phone calls. Hopefully that explanation that our city engineer provided last week on the dual challenges on the water system and how they handled it, there was a time where they were getting crushed with calls. But I appreciate you recognizing the staff and the effort they put in. And I think that's a good opportunity maybe for me to say what I had planned to share for my message, other than responding to everybody's remarks, is that I really, as the mayor, and I, you know, I take my word for it if you want, but I spend my days here working in the community, with the community as a whole, and in this building, working with the staff in the building. And I just, I just have to say, there are some really incredible human beings that work here, and they really do put and they really do put a lot of themselves into the work that they do. None of us are ever going to be perfect, and we're always going to be, we'll always own where we make mistakes, and that's what I really appreciate about it. All the challenges that were in the system and the explanations they gave, but also the the response that we provided. And I just want to thank all of the staff that work here that support me and welcome me here and support the city and all the work that we do here. That's why it meant so much that Laura recognized that, so thank you for that. And Laura, I agree with your sentiments on the survey as well. It actually made me feel something similar, too. It made me feel like we're focused largely on the right things, but it also reminded me that we have more work to do, right? And getting back to my prior remark about the staff, when we're working on it every day, we're like in the grind all the time, focusing on all of these things and working on them, it's a reminder that all of the concerns were brought up in the report. They're they're concerns that we all share and that we want to address, and that they take time. They don't they don't change overnight. But they also don't change by themselves. They're made to change, made by people to change. It's the people in this building, but it's also the people in this city that help us do that. I really want to create an environment, not only for our staff, but also for our community as a whole, where it's not, like I said, in this chamber, where it's not us against them. It's us. It's Ogden. We need everybody helping, everybody lifting. This is an incredible place to live. We are not Washington DC. Politics doesn't have to be Washington DC. We are a city that loves where we are, loves to serve, and we're a community of people, and it was reflected in the comments in the survey, that we wish to see each other thrive and succeed. So I just want to remind everybody and just to make sure that we are keeping that in mind, that we are Ogden City, we are Ogden as a community. We are the greater Ogden community, including the cities that are around us in Weber County. Consider Ogden home. And we are not Washington DC, and we don't have to act like it or carry ourselves as though we are. We're here helping each other and helping people to create opportunities and an environment to thrive. Your comments on the re recorder to Laura, that reminded me of like years ago, a long time ago. When I was a fish biologist, and there was a number, in my career, there was a time where I actually, I got to travel in the United States. I went to Virginia, North Carolina, Maryland, Colorado, Oregon, Idaho, Arizona, Utah. I went all over the country, and I got I got all these certifications in hydrology and blue river morphology, and I combined it with my studies in in fish ecology. And we were studying how to restore rivers to benefit communities. I actually got to study a lot of rivers in downtown environments. And at the time, when we started, I told the story, was that last week? We were hosting a group of of practitioners and planners and that wanted to see the work that we did on our river, so they could replicate some of the principles in their rivers, their communities. And they raved about the work that we did, because it was it was kind of forward-thinking and cutting it to the time, but the principles that I learned when I traveled the country is that you need to find a way to make sure that the environment benefits people and that people benefit the environment, so that it becomes a coexistence, a relationship between the two. And when you when you're at odds with each other, it never works for the river or for the people around it. So our mantra became that we wish to create life within the river so that we can create life around the river. And what we ended up doing is, and I'll and I'll never forget, I told the story when I welcomed all these practitioners to Ogden, is that the very first day that we went down there to look at what we were up against, then RFK Junior, head of the Waterkeeper Alliance International, was coming to town. And so we were preparing for evaluating that river for restoration. And and we went down there, and we feared for our safety. We were, uh, there were active drug deals happening. You could, we we were listening to children. There was a whole row of children coming when we were there just last week, coming in a field trip of some kind. You just hear all this laughter of children playing and everything. And that sound just was such a stark contrast to the pit bulls that were barking on the that corner that we were standing on, as I told the story. There were fields of weeds. The fields were full of soils that were laced with all environmental toxins, toxins. We've since done a lot of remediation of soils, but there was junkyards that lined the river at the time. We had buried pits full of car batteries that we removed, glass as far as the eye could see from the old Becker Brew. We had 100, I think, or so tires that we removed. Car bodies, water heaters, you name it, we removed it. All in the sense that, in the goal, that we were going to create an environment that created a community around it. And then we did the master planning. This is why the RDA was involved at the time, to purchase the property, was to ultimately redevelop it in concert with the ecological differences that we made. And in a master-planned way that allowed for the heights to be staged and stacked so that people could see the river, so that the communities were laid out in a way that people accessed rivers for recreation and for open space. And we also, we moved back the what's called the riparian area, and we set levees that allowed for water flood command to go back and forth naturally. And then we protected those in perpetuity through conservation efforts. And so what then seemed like open space was actually junkyards, environmental pollutants, fields of weeds, places for places for drug deals and violence. It was it was everywhere, which now is becoming, sure, it's being developed, but it's being developed into a master plan community that provides for life around the river, therefore achieving our ultimate goal of life within the river gets life around the river. So today we have what's called a blue ribbon fishery. It's something we're really proud of. The development around the river may be not perfect, but it's much, much better than what most communities would ever dream of having. So I do feel like, to a large degree, we are fulfilling that goal and that dream and that vision. But I want to make sure that people are accessing those opportunities for the open space and recreation that they were there for them, and to know that they are protected in perpetuity through conservation efforts, forever. To Teresa's comments about the federal buildings and jobs, it's been hard to keep up with the rumors and the speculation. I've even gotten phone calls from media, asking, national media, asking, "Mayor, what's your comment on this?" And I'm like, "Tell me more, because that's the first I've heard it." So that's just a symptom of the amount of speculation and rumors. There are real impacts, too. We know that. But we do need to make sure that we're not just reliant on federal jobs or federal grants moving forward. That's for sure. But the comment of less, of more crime, uh, less crime, just want to point out, we've had a more than around 50% reduction in Part 1 crimes. No one ever would have said that Ogden would be on par with the crime rates of Sandy City 10 years ago. But that's exactly where we are. We're less than half the crime rates of Salt Lake City, almost one-third. So we are making gains, but that doesn't discount the fact that there are people that are still experiencing it, and it is still a fact of life for too many people. So it's something we're going to continue to prioritize. And I share your prioritization, Teresa, for the focus on small businesses. And we are making tremendous improvements. Lucky Slice grabbing a quick slice of pizza for lunch and ran into a guy who came over to me and complimented our staff on the process that they were using to review his building permits for a small housing development. It was like three homes, so very small, on a lot on the east bench. And he just said, "Thank you for everything that your staff are doing to make working easier than it's ever been." We're not going to claim to be perfect, but we will, I want to make sure that we are making improvements, and that is all being driven by the hard work.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeez, torpedo. Comments from the council?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment. For the past four years, I've had the privilege of serving as an executive officer of the Ogden-Weber Chamber of Commerce. And to address what Teresa said about business not growing in our community, I would say it's quite the opposite, because the chamber, which covers all of Ogden City and Weber County, has had significant growth in the business community, and the majority of those are entrepreneurs who are starting new businesses in our community. And just in the next couple of weeks, Councilman Ritchie and Jared will be participating in ribbon cuttings, hopefully I can too, for just four businesses. They're not all in Weber County, or not all in Ogden City. Some are in Weber County, but there's one, there was a grand opening for a new business called At Work in Roy, Corner Fix, Blue Diamond Industries, Dirt Roads Couture. And those are just a couple of the businesses, four of them, that will be having ribbon cuttings for grand openings again in the next few weeks. So I am pleased to tell you that there are about 40, excuse me, let me just back up and get that number correct, approximately 50 to 70 new businesses per year that are opening up that we are seeing in the Ogden-Weber Chamber of Commerce. I don't have the statistics for Ogden City, but that's pretty significant growth, and the majority of those are all entrepreneurs who are starting new businesses in this community. And in this, the greater Ogden area is what I'll call it. And Ogden City is the hub for a lot of what happens in Weber County. So I'm just pleased to 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 say that there is a focus on business. There's a very beautiful entrepreneurial spirit in our community, and a lot of opportunities for people who are looking for places to start businesses in in this community as well. So just kudos to Ogden City and our staff and and this community, because there is a there is a lot of growth in small businesses, will always want more. And I'm a proponent for that as well, but small businesses bring in a nice tax base. Larger ones bring in a bigger tax base, and BDO does a good job of promoting that as well. And Og- and that's all Ogden City and and BDO. And but it also brings in new job opportunities for our residents, and it brings new people into our community. So there is a lot of good things happening that not everybody sees, but nonetheless, there is a lot of business activity in our community that I think we just need to recognize and celebrate. And I just want to bring to everyone's attention tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I I just want to really quickly say that tonight in our work session, we had our director from the IT department come and talk to us. Last week, I had mentioned that a person, or that I hadn't received an email from someone, and I had looked through my emails. I had not received it, and and it was not in my email. And I found out later that that person's email had gone to our junker spam emails and did not realize that that I needed to in-depth look in my junk emails. And so I want to say that we are now aware that that's a possibility. In fact, as we were sitting around, I think many of us looked in our junk boxes and said, "Wow, this person has," or "Another person has reached out to me." And so we will do a better job at looking at our junk emails and going forward. And just want to say that, in all transparency, that that we we didn't know that that was even an issue. So I will I will be the first to say that I'll I'll look through that as well, so.
Chair, if I can just add to that, I I think we also learned how we take people that, for whatever reason, end up going to the junk mail. We can get them back out so that doesn't happen anymore. And that's something that all of us, I think, have kind of raised our right arm to the square, so yeah, we'll we'll be vigilant about getting that done. Because I I think universally, all of us want to hear from the members of our community. We, this is a representative government, and if we don't hear from you, we can't represent you. So we appreciate our IT department, who has made us aware of that, and we'll we'll do much better. So but we apologize for the mistake that was made, and and we'll do our best to correct that.
I just have one other quick thing, and as we're talking about staff, I was gone for a week in February and realized that my, I I must have a small leak in my house, water-wise, and so we have somebody, a water conservation individual, that came out and actually helped tell me that I must have something going on. Of course, we could not pinpoint it. That would have been way too easy. But it's a it's a service that is really nice to know that we have. And as we start to go into the spring and summer, where many of the community doesn't have secondary water, but only has culinary water, it's it's really important to make sure that we're we're looking at all the drops that we're we're using. So thank you to the staff and Matt for coming out and doing that and helping me out, so. I don't, I thought, I saw Brandy back there, so. That's all I have. Anybody else? All right, no more comments. We, consideration of a closed session.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we adjourn into a closed session for one of the seven items listed.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Councilmember Blair, to move into a closed session. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer?
Aye.
Chair White?
Aye. We will be adjourning from that, after that meeting.